We are all ready. I would like to call the order, the Winthrop School Committee meeting of Monday, August 19th, 2024. This meeting is being held in the Harvey Hearing Room at the Town Hall, One Metcalf Square in Winthrop. We are starting at 6:00 PM. May I have the roll call, please?
Ms. Leonard, Mr. Littieri, Mr. Matucci.
Yep.
Ms. Petrie, Mr. Pierinton.
Here.
Ms. Barry.
Here.
Ms. Powell. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Pierinton, can you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no public comment tonight. I will move to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of July 22nd, 2024.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Mr. Pierinton. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Matucci.
Yep.
Mr. Pierinton.
Yep.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes. May I have a motion to approve -- a motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of August 5th, 2024?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Matucci, second by Ms. Barry. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Matucci.
Yes.
Mr. Pierinton.
Obstain.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes. Without a quorum on that, do we need to have -- push that to the next meeting?
No, thanks.
A quorum of the people.
Okay. Motion passes. May I have a motion to approve warrant SPW 25-3 in the amount of $160,488.71.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Mr. Pierinton. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Matucci.
Yes.
Mr. Pierinton.
Yes.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes. May I have a roll call -- I'm sorry. May I have a motion to approve payroll warrant SPW 25-01 in the amount of $142,756.53?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pierinton, second by Ms. Barry. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Matucci.
Stand.
Mr. Pierinton.
Yes.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes. May I have a motion to approve payroll warrant SPW 25-02 in the amount of $267,868.11?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Pierinton.
Second.
Second by Ms. Barry. Any discussion? Hearing none. May I have a roll call?
Mr. Matucci.
Stand.
Mr. Pierinton.
Yes.
Ms. Barry.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes. We have -- do we have any homeschool applications to be considered?
We do. We have four homeschool applications. They're all returning students who were homeschooled last year, that all of their plans meet the requirements, and recommend approving them.
May I have a motion to approve the four homeschool applications?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Mr. Pierinton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or objections? Hearing none. Motion passes. Superintendent's report.
Yes. So it's hard to believe we're talking about the opening day of school, which is coming up very quickly. So teachers are going to be returning on Monday, the 26th, and they're also going to be here on the 27th for two full days of professional development. During that time, we do a multitude of things. One of the main things we do is all of the mandatory trainings that teachers are required to have. So there's multiple levels of ethics trainings, and we use an Arcs Ed format, so the teachers have -- over the past couple of years, we've built this program where teachers can do this interactive form of training. So it's not simply looking at PowerPoint presentations and, you know, sort of checking a box that you went through, understanding how to file a 51A, your ethics training. It's actually interactive through Arcs Ed, which is something we invested in when Arcs Ed first started, so we got on very early at a very, very low price. They put all of the trainings on a platform, so teachers can do those trainings either before they come to school and utilize some of that time that we have for them to do the training and working in their classrooms, getting their classrooms set up if they haven't already come in, looking at student data, reviewing their student schedules, and so a lot of that work is done on day one. We have principal meetings in each building. We've narrowed our principals' meetings down to much more working meetings versus sort of the minutia. We've turned all of that into emails. So little things that you can read in an email no longer really take place in principal meetings. It's more working groups for whatever topics the principals have on that day. The first one every year is filled with all kinds of questions and discussions around how school runs, introducing new staff. And then on the 27th, we all come together at the Neil Shapiro Theater as a full school. At 7:30, staff arrives. They have a light breakfast, some coffee and fruit and muffins, get to mingle with each other, see people they haven't seen all summer, and, you know, get to meet new staff in their buildings. Then they come into the auditorium and spend some time listening to me, talking about the upcoming school year, sort of reminding people of our vision and our mission and where we hope to be during the school year and at the end of the school year. We introduce and talk -- don't introduce. We go over all the teachers that have been here for multiple years, the 25-year, 35-year people. You get your beautiful lovely pin or pen, which some folks wait for and others don't want to stand up and come up and receive those because they don't want to be standing in front of everybody. So that work gets done. The union has some time, according to their contract, that they get to stay in that auditorium with their union group and have some discussions around upcoming union activities and introducing new staff to the union and the like. And then they go back to their buildings for the second half of the day, and there are additional meetings, building-based meetings by group. So grade-level meetings, special education meetings. The nurses are doing quite a bit of work with the nurses as a whole, as a whole group for that day. And then on Wednesday, the students come back. So Wednesday and Thursday, students in kindergarten through grade 12. So a little change this year. Preschoolers typically start it on the first day, so we always had pre-K through 12, starting the first day. Everybody came at once. This year, we've decided to switch it up a little bit and have the preschool teachers working within the kindergarten on the first two days of school. A lot of these preschool teachers had some of the students that are now transitioning to kindergarten. When students move into kindergarten, as we all know, it's a scary experience for them. We felt the time would be useful, not only for the students to feel more comfortable in seeing familiar faces, so they have their new teacher, and then there's preschool teachers that they're familiar with, but also being able to share information beyond what we've shared at the end of this school year, doing our vertical meetings with our staff for the transition. But just being there and being present with the kindergarten teachers kind of helped transition the students. And then the pre-K students will come after Labor Day. So Tuesday after Labor Day, pre-K students will go into their pre-K classroom with their parents on the first day, spend some time with the teacher, going over routines, introducing them to the classroom. The other reasoning behind that was with the little ones, the four-year-olds who aren't yet ready for or age-eligible for kindergarten in our preschool, it is a huge transition to leave your parent or your adult who's taking care of you during the day and going into preschool. And where we start before Labor Day, if you think about it, the pre-K kids would, if they started with K through 12, they'd come for a couple of hours on Wednesday, and then they'd come for a little more time on Thursday. Then they'd be off Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and then come back with no adult on the following day. So we felt it would be that stretch in between, it's almost like you're psyching the kids. You bring them in, everybody gets comfortable, and then you have to kind of start that transition all over again. So we're going to try that this year and see how it works. Staying on preschool, we had the opportunity this year, after doing some work and research with the Department of Education and wanting to expand our students' access to preschool. As you guys know, our full-day preschool had a combination of students in the past. It's always the one full-day program we had, had eight general ed students and seven students with IEPs in it. That number can go to a 15-5 split, 15 regular ed students and five special education students, if you have the numbers to do so. So we had a waiting list this year for preschool that -- because we were oversubscribed. So we had seven or eight kids that were still on the waiting list that really wanted to come to our full-day pre-K. So we did a lot of work to figure out how we could make that work. There's a little bit of a delay in figuring that out because first, we have to manage how many students with IEPs that we have to service in the preschool and make sure if we drop down from a seven-student roster in the full day to a five-student roster, that we would be able to accommodate all of our students. So in the -- I think it was about the second week of -- first week of August, we determined that based on the numbers that we have, that that was going to be doable. So it does two things for us. It allows more students to come into the preschool, more general education students to attend our preschool. It increases income to the school, but that's sort of a myth because when we change it to a 15-5 split, we have to add an additional aide because of the numbers and because of the regulations around how many aides need to be in a classroom that has students with special needs. When you have a number that reaches 15, there needs to be two. So that class will be going up to 20. And working with the Department of Education, if we want to eke that number up by one or two, we can with a waiver. So we're in the process of doing that to make sure that anyone who is on the waiting list has the opportunity to attend. So it's going to bring in probably 45,000 with full tuition. It's $6,000 per full-day student, which is less than what the typical preschools in the community would charge if you went to preschool five days a week. So it's a good deal for parents, but it is a lot of money. $6,000 for preschool is a lot. So we put it out to those parents, and all the parents on the waiting list accepted. So now they'll be coming up and paying their tuition, and in the meantime, we'll be hiring an additional ESP for that classroom. So we're excited about it. Andrea Sullivan is the classroom teacher for the full-day preschool, and it's housed at the high school. It also acts as a laboratory for our students who are thinking about going into the field of education. So students from either high school participate in that classroom through Mr. Crombie and Ms. Andrea and have access to working with preschool students. And it's been a really, really oversubscribed activity for kids at the high school, for students at the high school, but certainly has had some great outcomes. We find kids that are really interested in going into the field of teaching, wanting to get in that classroom, and they learn a ton from Ms. Andrea. So we're thankful to Ms. Andrea Sullivan for taking that leap with us. It's a shift. That eight-seven split is a shift when you go 15-5. Preschool students, we have a bathroom within the classroom, which is key for our students because we have to go to the bathroom a lot in preschool. We're going to add some additional cubbies to the classroom to make sure everybody has their own space. So we're excited that we're able to do that. If we could do preschool, universal preschool, that would be amazing. Of course, we would need another building in order to do that, but that's a hope for the future. So staffing. Staffing has been very, very, very busy this summer. I can -- we talked about at the last town council meeting, there was some conversation around crossing gods and how we could get more crossing gods, and we continue to post for crossing gods. It's not the highest-paying position, nor is it the most glorious position because you're outside fighting people, running stop signs and refusing to stop, and in the weather. It could be freezing, it could be pouring, it could be snow, and you're out there crossing students. We've had real difficult time finding people who are available. We've looked at job sharing, asking parents if they wanted to do it and split a shift with somebody. So we've looked at all different possibilities. We've also looked at rendering it out to a company, which is an exorbitant amount of money. I looked at that two years ago, and it was well over $175,000 to get seven crossing gods that would be here full-time, meaning it could be a different crossing god every day, but the company manages that. And it's -- they get insurance and they pay their insurance, so it's extremely expensive. So that was outside of our budget. But I'm happy to report, we have 2.5 crossing gods. That's actually three whole -- four whole people who are splitting, some who are splitting shifts. As of right now, the placements for those people, the Gorman Fort Banks area down where the crosswalk is at the DPW, that's sort of a nightmare because people don't stop at the crosswalk, so we have a crossing guard there to try to get people to stop. We do enforce it, and we have a detail at the top of the street that we can always speak with if we're having any difficulty. We also have here at the police station crossing, which I witnessed probably 90% of the cars blowing through the stop signs, this four-way stop sign between Lucky and the police station. We have a crossing guard there for the year so far. And then we have our .5 person, who right now is just a morning person. We're hoping to find someone to do the afternoon shift. Lots of folks had talked to us about the Walden Street now that the bus goes down that street. So Walden Street on the corner of the Rink, so between the Rink and the E.B. Newton. So right now, we have somebody who's available to do that in the morning, if anyone's listening. We give you a really nice vest and some gloves and a pretty hat if you would like to do it. Please contact -- you can contact me directly at the school, either through email or just calling, and we will get you set up for that. So we're continually looking for people. So pretty psyched about that. Just in terms of what we have filled. So we have filled two second -- two first-grade positions at the Gorman Fort Banks, one ESP position at the Gorman Fort Banks, two occupational therapists at the Gorman Fort Banks, one SLP and six -- five, sorry, five ABA technicians that work with our students with autism. So those positions have been filled. There at the Cummings School, we have filled a fourth-grade position, a fifth-grade position, two ESP positions, a speech-language pathologist position, and we have one ABA therapist working with a student that's transitioning from the Gorman Fort Banks to the Cummings and into a classroom. So we're excited about filling that position. At the middle school, we filled one ESP position that was open. We have hired a special education chairperson for the middle school. That position was left vacant by Mark De Gregorio, who's become our athletic director, and we have filled one Spanish teacher's position. At the high school, we have filled one ELA position, three math positions. If you remember, we had a lot of math folks retiring. We have filled two Spanish, open Spanish teaching positions, and we have filled the phys ed slash health position. And then district-wide, we had filled one occupational therapist position, which is somebody who actually goes between all four schools. So that's why we refer to that person as a district-wide position. As of this afternoon, I've updated this. We have a few open positions left. At the Gorman Fort Banks, we have a grade-two teaching position that is open, and they're actively interviewing for that. At the Cummings School, we have an open grade-four teaching position. Our special education chairperson position remains open in that building. However, a retired special education administrator has been filling that position part-time. And I say part-time because she's retired and can only make money part-time. It's Nancy De Gregorio. She can only make a certain amount of money when you're retired, but part-time doesn't really -- that vocabulary word doesn't fit into Nancy De Gregorio's work ethic. So she has spoiled us a little bit and has been very good about helping us. The high school special education -- no, sorry. The high school special ed chairperson's position is filled. The middle school special ed chairperson is still open. We have applicants, and we're actively pursuing hiring someone for that position as well. I think it's important for parents to know and for you all to know as a school committee that last-minute resignations, so when somebody resigns last minute, for whatever their reason, family situation, they're moving, they don't like to commute anymore, they found a job that pays them higher somewhere else. Those last-minute resignations sort of wreak havoc on us as a school department, but more importantly, the impact it has on students can be significant. I think the key takeaway from it is that we have no control. So if somebody were to resign last minute, we can -- technically, we cannot -- legally, we cannot hold them to the position. And we've looked at that because they sign a salary notification that says they'll give us 60 days' notice. It is not enforceable. I've checked that with our school's attorney. It's not enforceable, and sometimes it's not in the best interest of the school anyway. So we have had a, over the last seven days, a handful of last-minute resignations. Parents have voiced their anger about that over the last two days, especially at the elementary school. Why? Because we sent out notices that said, "Mrs. X is your child's teacher," or a notice that says, because you know, everybody waits. My godchild has texted me six times today, asking me who his middle school teacher is. People wait for that letter, and they want to know who their teacher is. And we had to send some out at the Cummings School this year, one out at the Cummings School this year, that said TBD, to be determined. And we understand that that's -- for a child, that's upsetting. However, we don't want to put a name down of somebody who has resigned and only to tell the child two weeks later that you have a new teacher. So anytime that happens, we begin hard and fast to try to find a teacher or make some type of an arrangement to make sure that that class is covered by, at best, a certified teacher. Sometimes we can't find a certified teacher, and we need to put an instructional current ESP or instructional aide in the classroom with support of the same grade-level teachers until we can hire a certified teacher to fill that classroom. So I know it's upsetting to parents, and they call and say, you know, "You have to move my child." They can't not have a teacher. They will have a teacher, but there's 20, you know, 22 students that it affects, and we can't, technically can't move 22 students to someone else because then class size in the other six grade levels would be very large. We are going to look at that if we can't find a teacher, but we're hopeful in the few cases that we have that we will find those teachers before we need to resort to moving students into other teachers' classrooms. So I just think it's important for folks to know that it's not something we enjoy doing. We don't think it's fun to have a TBD on a kid's notice of who their classroom teacher is going to be. We don't take it lightly, and we do work hard to try to fill the position, but sometimes this notification is outside of our control. So I talked about the pre-K. Placement letters have been mailed. I don't know if anyone's watched the mail system in the last two years, three years since COVID, but it's really not working well because they have the same issues that we have, which is staffing. So mail can be slow. Some parents received their notifications, other parents didn't. It's not -- we mail everything at the same time, typically by school. So one school will mail all their letters on the same day. They come up here, I know when they're putting the postage on them to get them out. Whether they get to your house in a timely fashion, again, another thing that's outside of our control is the postal system, whether they get there. The other thing that could prevent somebody from getting a letter is if they did not complete the necessary re-registration process. So that's the way we re-register kids that are moving from one school to another. Doesn't mean the child's not still enrolled, because they are enrolled until we finalize the fact that they're either not living in Winthrop, or they are. But what we don't do is we don't send out your child's placement until you've completed that process because it is a policy of the school district that you do need to complete it. So it's sort of motivational for parents. If they don't get the letter, then they'll follow through and complete that. So I think that is just another bit of information that families need to know. In terms of enrollment, so enrollment is ever-moving. As of this week, we have 65 new registrations into this school year. So 65 students who were not here last year enrolled in the Winthrop Public Schools. 55, approximately 55, I'm going to get a better number because I was doing it quick before I came down here, but 55 students approximately were unenrolled this -- at the end of this school year. And when I say unenrolled, it means that was their option, so they've either gone to private school or they've moved on their own. I will bring next week any students that have been removed. So unenrolled is -- unenrolled by choice of the people that are going to St. Mary's or maybe moved. And then there will be students that can't register because they can't prove that they live in Winthrop, and this is something that goes on throughout the entire school year. We keep a very close attention to registration and residency to make sure that every student that attends the Winthrop Public Schools lives in the town of Winthrop. We do that because of enrollment, and we want to make sure class size stays where it needs to be, and we do not have school choice. That is a very time-consuming part of the day for principals, myself, the Parent Information Center, Laurie, and others who work around registration with us. It's something that we pay attention to every single day. So we have, as of today, 1,980 students enrolled, actively enrolled, and we're -- that's not going to be the total number because we still don't -- we haven't uploaded the approximately 20 more preschool kids that are either half-day or kids that come in for service only. I believe we're going to hit 2,000, which is going to be the largest number we've had in several years, and I'm going to be providing the committee as well as some others with some of those statistics prior to our next meeting. So the Gorman Fort Banks enrollment is approximately 500, and then the 20 more pre-K kids that will be actively enrolled once we figure out how many kids are returning for service only. Cummings School has 469, Middle School 434, and the High School 577. Those numbers, you know, they change every day, but we'll see come our next school committee meeting when everybody's actually in, and we've weeded through those who could not reestablish residency, whether they get to stay or they don't, depending upon the documentation they have. I'll update those numbers again for you. But that's a -- a pretty good jump considering we pay such close attention to residency and making sure that everybody who's attending lives here, and students have also withdrawn for their own personal reasons. Homeless students, at the end of July, we had 37 students that were classified as homeless, registered in the Winthrop Public Schools, and that means they could be homeless and from an incident such as a fire in their home or displacement because they were evicted or they were doubling up with somebody and they can no longer live there. And a homeless student can be placed in another community while they're homeless, and they still have the right to attend the public school in the community where they became homeless from. And the school, Winthrop Public Schools, is responsible to transport any student who becomes homeless back to the public school on a daily basis. So we have to go and pick them up in the community that they're placed in while they're temporarily homeless. Jen O'Connell is our pupil personnel director. She takes -- she is also the homeless liaison. She processes every homeless situation that comes before her and makes the determination whether or not the student qualifies as being homeless or not. There's very strict criteria, but there's a lot of criteria that you have to go through. So Jen keeps that up to date. She'll give me for our next meeting, she'll calculate the August and first week of September and see where that number is. She's anticipating it's a bit higher than 37, given some of the paperwork she's been processing over the summer. We have had, in terms of the sticking on special education, the special education budget, we accurately predicted the added district tuition, students that go to collaboratives of private special education day schools. And as you recall, we were able to prepay some of those tuitions, which allowed us to lower the tuition line in terms of, you know, the cuts that we had to make to get the $1.4 million worth of cuts down. Since that time, we have had two students move into the district. Both have moved in with IEPs that are from collaborative schools. So they were living in other communities up and through the school year in June, and they have since moved into Winthrop. Residency has been established and proven. Students who attend collaborative schools, if you are living in, I'm going to pick a fictitious town, Watertown, and your child is attending a collaborative in Newton and you move to Winthrop, your child still has the right to attend a collaborative. They could either stay in Newton, or we could find a collaborative closer to the Winthrop Public Schools. But their tuition also comes to the school district when they come. So whatever the tuition was in Newton or in the new collaborative, say in Shore Collaborative in Chelsea, Winthrop Public Schools has to pay that tuition. On a private special education school, if they move after April 1st of the school year and they come here April 2nd, the school that they came from owns that tuition for the balance of that fiscal year, that following fiscal year. So if you think about it, the collaborative tuition follows you to where you go. That's one of the unanticipated special education costs that happens to school districts across the entire Commonwealth, and that is why you have circuit breaker. So circuit breaker funding sits in an account for unanticipated special education emergencies or move-ins. I want to remind you all that we dipped into that incoming circuit breaker money. So the money that's coming into the school this year So the money that's coming into the school this year that's supposed to sit in an account for emergencies, we used approximately half of that. I can give you a truthful figure at the next meeting. But we used approximately half of that to cover this year's deficit in, in our, in our allocation for our budget. We have not had to do that in the six year, six of the seven years that I've been here. It's not something that I'm proud of that we have to do, but it does have an impact on the FY twenty-six budget because that money will not be available to offset the FY twenty-six costs. So that the amount of those, I will have a figure for you after we have the team meetings for, for those students. We have developed internally some really strong special education programs, and the purpose of developing them within the Winthrop Public Schools, my primary purpose is to keep students in Winthrop and not to put little children, especially students with non-verbal abilities, on vehicles and send them somewhere to get educated. It was to build the programs here. So it's a cost, it's a cost savings, but it's also a commitment to our kids. So we'll determine whether or not the programs that we have in district, if they're appropriate, we may not have to pay a tuition for a child, either one of those children to go to a collaborative, if we can meet their needs within the district. We're working on that to see. Parents have to agree. They have the right to stay put, which means until they agree, their child stays in a collaborative. But we have some pretty impressive in-district programs, and typically, parents would prefer their children be within the community and have people in the community know who they are. So that's, I'll bring you more on that when we finalize that. And then the last thing I had was, we spent so much time revising the policies, the fifty thousand policies we have in the school district, getting them down to twenty thousand, and we started the process of having the subcommittee review all of those adjustments and take them by, by the letter, so policy A, policy B, and take them as a stack and, and approve those. That's sort of fallen off the track because other things became more poignant that we had to address. But we're going to get back to that business and start setting up policy subcommittees so we can get the rest of those done with the, with the sole purpose of getting all of them approved so that they then become digital, so that then when somebody asks us about a policy, we can point them to a website and that they'll update themselves as this committee makes changes in the future.
Excellent.
I think, oh, that's, that's all I had because you're going to go to handbooks at the end, and I'll talk about that when you get there.
We do. Do you have personnel news that you want to share beyond what you've already?
Just, just, you know, we talked about the new hires. We have fourteen teachers, five therapists, one administrator, six ABA technicians, and three ESPs that are all new hires. That's twenty-nine new hires. That's a lot of reintroducing people to our district and getting the mentors and doing all of that work. That list is in your packet. We've, some of the people on that list have replaced some of the resignations you see on your agenda, and the postings are relative to the people who have resigned in the above-noted bullet under personnel. New, the new appointments, just when we talk about administration, Rachel Baxter, Rachel Delsolio, she became Rachel Baxter over the summer. She had applied for and was appointed to be the assistant principal of the middle school, and those are big shoes to fill. She's excited and looking forward to it. She was the chairperson of the evaluation team, of the special ed admin at the high school, and I told you that we filled that position. Mark De Gregorio was the special education chairperson at the middle school, did an unbelievable job in that role. He applied for and was hired as the athletic director. He currently is balancing two jobs and, and helping us out until we find a replacement. Both Rachel and Mark have graciously agreed, and this is why promoting from within is such a valuable, valuable move. They have both agreed to make sure that the special edu, the openings in special education are taken care of and that whoever comes in, they will train those people, get them up to date, introduce them to families while they're still doing their other jobs. And that's the value of, of keeping people within the district that are committed to the work that they've done, and they've both done incredible work. They value the work that they've done, and it's funny because I feel like they have, like, ownership. So they know they have to leave this job. They, they kind of don't want to, but they really want the other job because they want to change, sort of a change in their career in special education is high burnout, especially within the last, you know, four years. But they just can't let go. So it, it will be helpful to us, and then eventually, we'll have them sort of break, break off and, and assume their, their position, but that will be very helpful to us. So that was all I had on, on personnel.
Wonderful. And under new business, we need to approve the student handbook, the, for the twenty, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-five school year. May I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Mr. Martucci.
So the only changes in the handbooks, we put a lot of time into the handbooks over the last couple of years, updating the discipline policies, updating language across the, the board by school and appropriate to the different levels at each school with input from the site councils. And so a lot of work had been done on that. The bullying policy had been updated to make sure we have to update that every two years. That had been updated last year. So there were minimal changes except for some minutes on the start and end times, as well as adding the S-three language. So that's the language around us looking and evaluating every child every year, which, which is our final goal. Putting it in the handbook so that parents are aware of what we're doing, so that they have understanding of what S-three is. So that was the major addition to any one of, of the handbooks. There was no other changes in those handbooks that would raise an eyebrow or that you would have a concern about. It's more, you know, a couple of spelling corrections and the S-three language as well as some minutes on the start and end times.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Martucci?
Yes.
Mr. Pearnton?
Yes.
Ms. Barry?
Yes.
Ms. Powell?
Yes. Public relations.
So, not yet, not so much yet. We do have a school supply drive by, run by Gabby and Joe Shea. They run a, they've done this now for several years in a row, where they collect school supplies and provide the school supplies directly to the school. I've received a couple of emails this year about parents that are struggling with school supplies. I think it's important for parents to know that you do not have to go out and buy everything that you see on the list that they put out at Target. Those are all suggested lists. You can purchase anything that you want. If you cannot or do not want to purchase something, you do not have to. What you, what would be helpful is if you contact the school and just say, gee, you know, either I'm not able to do this or I'm not sure what I should be sending in, but if there's any child or any family that cannot afford or cannot get to, it's just not the right timing for them, and they need something for their child, they just need to contact the school directly and let the secretary know. It's confidential. It will, you, you will not appear on a list. Nobody will have any understanding that you have asked for any support, and we will provide you with that support for school supplies. Teachers should be reaching out. They may give you a suggestion about what you could send in if you want to. Every year, you see it, paper towels, tissues, hand sanitizer. We have paper towels. We have tissues. We have hand sanitizer. Parents oftentimes ask, how can I help? It's always good to have extra, but it's not a requirement for you to send that in in order for your child to remain attending the Winthrop Public Schools. Anyone who has any question on it can certainly email me, and I will walk you through that process if you're not comfortable calling the school. And then I think that was it. School lunch is free again this year. Woo-hoo. So we're excited about that. It really boosts the number of kids that do eat. And we've worked, you know, we're working on the menu. We have a new Aramoc contract that I think will be coming to the committee at some point, or it already did. Maybe it already did. We didn't have to bid them out.
We've bid it out.
But we don't have to pray. So we work with them closely about food choices and listen to the students. I know there was some struggle last year where parents were concerned that we were running out of food at the middle school and high school. Technically, we never ran out of anything. However, there were times when chicken patties were the thing, and by the time the fourth lunch got there, there were like four chicken patties left, and there were fourteen kids who wanted a chicken patty. But the week before that, there were forty-two chicken patties left, and only two kids wanted chicken patties. So, so the, the lunch ladies work hard to try to project that. It's not always perfect. We did not have one incident this year that there was not food for any child on any day. But if there are concerns, I encourage parents to contact their school principal and let their principal know what the concern is. Doesn't mean we can offer chicken patties every single day, five hundred of them. Food waste is something that we are very in tune to, in not wasting food and throwing food out. Or we, you know, we do some food recovery as well, but it's, it's, it's not an easy balance. I, I, I think about like every time I go food shopping, I spend four hundred dollars, and I, two days later, my kids are telling me there's nothing to eat. And then seven days later, I'm looking at my refrigerator disgusted that nobody ate the apples, nobody ate the watermelon, nobody ate the meat, and, and I'm having to donate it. So it's that same balance in the school. We can always do better, but, you know, we do need the feedback from parents. Lunch menus will be posted on the school's website. We have Power School now, which is our new student information system. We've been a little bit on the struggle bus with families, getting them, getting enrolled, but anytime you do something new, there's going to be challenges. Our parent information center folks have been more than amazing. Matter of fact, I was told by a small bird that they work Saturday and Sunday this, this past weekend, working on enrollment, and none of them contacted me to tell me that they work the overtime. And I think that's important, you know, to highlight. So they're out there working to get it done. We're going to have, we're going to have blips. Scheduling, who's, you know, looking at what the schedules look like. Give us a little bit of time. It's, it's, you know, it's like when you switch from cable to something else and you got to learn how to use the clicker. We're learning. We're learning. And that is all I have.
Any other questions from the committee? Hearing none, may I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Ms. Barry, second by Ms. Martucci. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We're adjourned.